Good evening. It's Thursday, October 3rd. I would like to call the school committee meeting to order. This meeting is being audio recorded by Jamie Wixton and recorded and broadcast by WCTV. Would you please stand for the pledge?
...............................................................
First item on our agenda is public participation. Is there anyone that wishes to address the committee? Seeing none, we will move on to good news. Does anyone like to share good news in the district? Dr. DeAndrea.
I received a letter, and I think, Mr. Chairman, I think you also received it. Mr. Palladino received it, from Niasse's Commission on Public Schools. They've reviewed Wareham High School's report of progress and planning and voted to award the high school continued accreditation. They named several reasons: the utilization of the Viking block, the increased course offerings, the facilities improvements, and a list of many others. So I just wanted to say congratulations to the high school. I know that that was a lot of work for Scott and his team, and so congratulations to them.
Great. Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Swett.
The Wareham girls-only volleyball team. When the rankings came out, they were 12th. They've moved up to the 11th in their division, which is a great position to be in to qualify for the playoffs. I only have seen one game, but they're doing a great job, so kudos to the coach, who has only been there three years? Two, three years? Yeah, I think it's three years. But they're doing a great job.
Excellent. Thank you. All right. We will move on to the minutes of the meeting from August 29th. You have those in our packet. Does anyone have any changes or edits? Jeff?
My wife will be happy to testify that Mr. Sweet is not an accurate characterization of me. So that's down near the bottom of page one. And secondly, another typo where on page two it said, "Mr. Swett shared that B believes," I'm sure it is intended to be "he believes." Other than that, it was its usual flawless effort.
I would just add two other small things. On page two, under goal number three, I think we just forgot the word "school" after middle. Not a big thing. And then on page four, paragraph five, the platform that we're using is Samore, S post re-M-O-R-E. I think we had something else there, an island in the Pacific.
That's what I thought it was, Samoa.
So with those changes, do I have a motion to accept the minutes?
As amended.
As amended. Second.
Second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstain? 4-0-0.
Just for the record, Samoa is a legitimate thing.
Samoa?
Yes.
Yes. Oh, very much so. But Samoa is...
Samoa.
Next up on the agenda, we have a request for a pilot club at Wareham High School. And I see we have some participants here, so please come forward. We also have our school attorney on the phone to answer any questions that the committee might have or any other member here tonight. So thank you for coming.
Thank you for having us. I have to my right Maria Villas-Booz, who is a senior at Wareham High School, also a member of the volleyball team. And she feels so strongly about this club, she's actually missing today's volleyball game that's going on right now. I have Ms. Lucia, who is one of our business teachers here as well, and they're going to present the pilot club.
Hello. My name is Maria. It's an honor to be here today, and I'm grateful to have some of your time to share this club. I wanted to open this club just because I am part of a group, and I have faith, and I'm a Christian, and I have started a conversation with Ms. Lucier last year about starting a club called the Jesus Club. And I wanted to bring this to the school because as a Christian and as my belief, I have to spread the gospel to everybody that I know and to everybody that I have the commitment to help and to be around. And I just wanted to read the club description to you guys, just so you have a little bit of knowledge of what this club is. It says, "The Jesus Club is a welcoming and comforting environment where students, faculty can come together to pray, worship, eat, have fellowship, and build a community." So this club is not specifically to people who are Christians, but to people who believe in anything, really. Anybody that has faith, anybody that has a belief is welcome to come, welcome to be part of a community, welcome to be part of a family, as I want to call it. My goals for this club is to create a safe space for everybody and to follow or explore more about their own faith. So me being a Christian, I want to follow, I want to get to know more, I want to understand more about the path that I'm following, and I also want people to come along and follow that path with me.
Thank you.
Guys, have any questions? Sorry.
There'll be a few, and a couple of statements, and we're going to have, like I said, our attorney here as well. So there's a couple of issues that, like, I've done some research on this and talked to our attorney as well. And we cannot create the appearance of a school committee, a public school committee, of school endorsement of a religion in violation of the Establishment Clause. That's a legal thing. Additionally, school personnel, in this case, cannot initiate, sponsor, promote, lead, or participate in any religious club meetings. So technically, that means we can't have a paid advisor for this club, nor can that, if someone was even volunteering, they cannot participate. They can monitor, but they can't participate. So I just want to set that up front, okay? And I know committee members may have some concerns as well and some questions. So I'll open it up to the committee members first for questions. And Mr. Pagnini, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you. Sometimes it's a little bit difficult to ask for a deep order of verification as I have no capacity to speak English and follow the conversation yet.
Okay. Thank you. We're moving you up to the front table. Okay. So first of all, any committee members have any questions of Maria? Yes.
Go ahead. You can go.
So first a question, and then I have some thoughts. I understand from, I can't remember who told me this, but I think it was a reliable source, that this club used to exist but was called the Faith Club.
Yes.
Can you, when you change the name from Faith Club to Jesus Club, you're sending a message, okay? And I wanted to understand why you chose to change the name from Faith to Jesus.
So in my thought process of when I was sitting in a meeting with Mr. Palladino, the Faith Club is to a wide variety. It's to everybody, and our club is also to everybody. But changing the name from Faith to Jesus, to me at least, is a path that I know a lot of the students follow in our school. And it's not necessarily making a selection to students, but making it known of what the club is about and what the club is going to be talked about and what is going to be going over. Because I know that there are certain other beliefs in the club, and somebody that doesn't necessarily follow Jesus can come into the club and not agree with something that is said in the club. So I just want to reiterate that in the name of the club.
So the first thing you should under, I'm going to tell you a story. And it, believe me, it's relevant. In approximately 2015, a football coach decided to lead his players in prayer if they chose to join him, in the center of the football field after every game. And a board very much like this one decided that that violated the law. And they basically asked him, I'm sure initially it was an ask, to stop doing it because they thought it violated the law. Literally, seven years later, the Supreme Court of the United States decided the school committee, Board probably, it was what they were called in Washington State, which is where this occurred, decided the school committee was wrong in their decision, okay? And it's Kennedy versus, I can't even remember who it, Kennedy was the football coach, okay? So the first thing I want you to understand is while we're going to vote on this, and we have not, because it would be a violation of the open meeting law, discussed it. So I have no idea how the vote is going to go, okay? We're going to vote on it, and it's going to be influenced by people like our counsel, Mr. Pagnini. It's also going to be influenced by our understanding of the law and the constitutionality, and maybe even influenced by our philosophy, hopefully not our ideology, but you get the idea, okay? But the most important thing for you to understand is, don't take whatever decision we make as personally, and don't assume that we're even necessarily correct, okay? Because this law is evolving as we speak. You've picked a hot button, okay? Whether you know it or not, you've picked a hot button, okay? So that's the most important thing for you to understand, okay? The second thing is that it's evolving because ultimately, any constitutional question, which this is, okay, is going to be decided not by the Congress. They can't get together on anything, basically, because the country is so divided, okay? It's going to be decided by nine human beings who have the privilege of being a Supreme Court Justice. And this particular Supreme Court has moved in a very conservative direction. Welcome. If this had come before a different Supreme Court 50, 60, 70 years ago, which, by the way, it did, because the Supreme Court, when they ruled in favor of the football coach, literally reversed a decision that was made by the same Supreme Court, except in the 1970s. So there is no right and wrong with respect to the decision we're going to make. We're simply going to do our best with respect to that. Now, in fairness, I'm going to tell you how I'm going to vote and why, okay? I don't, I would have preferred the Faith Club because you started out by saying that you feel it's your responsibility, and by the way, I respect that, to, there's a fancy word called proselytize, but basically what it means is you're advocating for your view of religion, okay? Because you started out saying that you have that responsibility to do that, okay? So I would have felt more comfortable about this situation if it was, stayed the Faith Club, and it didn't become the Jesus Club. So just understand that. But my biggest problem is that we all represent every single taxpayer, every single citizen, and most especially, every single parent who sends their kids to this high school. And as our chair already said, and I'll simply add to what he said, I'm uncomfortable having, not having an advisor, because I don't think we can have a club without an advisor. I know we can't by contract have an advisor that's not paid, okay? And I'm also uncomfortable with the notion of giving high school space, which is not free. It may seem to be free, but it's not free, to a club that is interested in worship and prayer. By the way, if Mr. Palladino, if your church, whatever it is, suddenly had a catastrophe and they couldn't worship in their church, and they wanted to rent the cafeteria until they could rebuild their church from a fire or whatever, as long as Mr. Palladino said he was charging a fair market value for that space, I wouldn't have any problem with worship going on in the school cafeteria. But the idea that it's part of the high school extracurricular activities and that it would be, that it would cost the taxpayers money, forces me to vote no. But it is, with total respect for the fact that, A, you're here advocating as you see fit, because I totally respect that, okay? I think, by the way, that Mr. Stanton, Colonel Stanton, would love this subject to be a part of his class, because this is exactly the kind of stuff that should get people thinking, okay? And that's what we want kids to do, critically think in Mr. Palladino's high school. So with all due respect, I intend to vote no.
But perhaps the discussion could change your mind still, that we have, maybe? Maybe not? We'll see.
I just want to introduce Amari Rose. He's a sophomore at Wareham High School. He's joining us as well.
Welcome.
Thank you. Joyce, you have a question?
I just, what I wanted to say, as Jeff did, clearly you're a leader in the school, and I appreciate that you're here.
Thank you.
Tonight. My question is, why in school? You know, you, with the type of club that you want to join, I'm just wondering why in school and why not at church or, you know, wherever that is that you...
So I spend a lot of my time in school. A lot of my hours are spent in school, doing clubs, et cetera, extracurriculars. This club is a national club, and if you guys want to pass this around, you can. Most of my time is spent in a building where I'm trying to learn, trying to communicate with other people, trying to connect with other people. And I just think that bringing this into my everyday life, into my weekly life, church might only be one or two times a day, or one or two times during the week. So having this into my daily life, me also trying to follow and continue to follow a path, and also trying to bring that to other people so they can start their own path, is really important to me. And I do have other schools that have this club and that are starting this club, and I do also have something called the Equal Access Act that if I can share as well, it also brings together why I want to start this club. The Jesus Clubs that are already in schools is Barnstable High School, New Bedford High School, New Bedford Vocational, Dartmouth High School, Sturgis Charter West High School, Falmouth High School, Cape Cod Regional Technical High School, Dennis Yarmouth High School, Cape Cod Community College, Medway High School, and BMC Durfee. And the high schools starting this month are Lowell High School, Monomoy High School, Lowell Technical High School, Hudson High School, South High School, Nossett Regional High School, Sandwich Middle High School, Martha's Vineyard High School. And a little bit of the Equal Access Act is, I can have access to a classroom that any other club can have access to. I can have grants from the government, just like they can too. I can use auditorium if they can too. And any other thing that the clubs use, I can also have access to. So I just wanted to share that with you guys as well, but...
Well, so it's policy, though, right, that clubs, any club, comes to the school committee and has, it gets approved. I mean, I can't, off the top of my head, remember us not approving a club, but, you know, any type of club would have to come through the school committee.
So one way around this, and I'll turn it over to our attorney in a second, and Dr. DeAndrea, too, to get your opinion. But a school board can allow any student-led or student-run groups if they deem our facility a limited open forum, either before school or after school. So that's something we would have to do if this, from what I can tell, we would have to do something like that as a committee, saying we would allow a student-run group, not a school-sponsored group. So it'd be different than a typical club. Schools have the right to monitor those club meetings, and they also have the right to close a limited open forum at any time they wish. So it does give us some control if we wanted to go that route.
We, way back in the late 90s, we had an unofficial club. It was called Meet at the Flagpole. And that morphed into the Faith Club. And then unfortunately during the pandemic, the Faith Club took a hiatus and really never came back. So that's a little historical. But to your point, I think what you're talking about was the same program as the Meet at the Flagpole. It was a group of students that would meet at the flagpole and have their prayer every morning, not supervised by a staff. And it was obviously on school grounds, but not in an area that we couldn't view.
Right. So a student-run group that has the, if we gave that permission to have this limited open forum at the school, you do have the right to different facilities at that. So I just wanted to like to ask the superintendent what his thoughts are, unless you want me to have Mr. Pagnini address us right now.
I can go first.
Okay. Matt first, and then you're up next.
So I've thought a lot about this, too. You know, we have many clubs outlined in our, in the contract. There's Chess Club, Science Club, Drama, Garden. We have these clubs because we want our students engaged in healthy activities outside of school. There's a lot of distractions in the world. There's lots of things that are unhealthy that people can get involved in. I think this is something that's healthy, and I would ask you to support it. It's student-led, it's after-school, it's voluntary, it's inclusive, and it's a healthy activity. So I would ask for your support.
April, and then I'll have Mr. Pagnini address us.
So first, I want to thank you for coming, because it takes a lot to do the research, get actively involved, and be as passionate about a subject as you clearly are. My, I am all for whatever anybody believes. I think that's one of the greatest things about living in this country, right, is that we have the right to worship, we have the right to believe, whatever it is that gives us, you know, either keeps us going, gives us motivation, gives us support morally, ethically, whatever you want to lump that in as. My one concern again is the way that it was presented, as is pushing a gospel or needing to push a specific gospel, right? Because faith is very interpretive. And having had, in the past, been named the Faith Club seemed a little bit more of an open umbrella, in my opinion. My other concern is the not being able to have a paid advisor because of the nature of the club. And any violation with a contract that that might, you know, coincide with for whatever advisor or lack thereof. I think having a student-run group is great. I also concern myself with, like, having a student-run group without an advisor, say there are challenges to your way of thinking, and you have a group where as you are saying that you want to invite people with other thoughts. Without having an advisor there that's allowed to get involved, say that those conversations take a turn, that concerns me, because this is such a hot-button subject. People feel very strongly one way or the other regarding it. And having an adult that's not allowed to intervene in any conversation that gets one way or the other, should say someone from the outside, you know what I mean, should have someone come to the group that does not necessarily follow your way of thinking? Or if it looks like the way that you described it, even in the information that you passed around, suggests fasting. That, to me, encouraging fasting with students that you don't know, don't know their medical history just because of a faith-based thing, that, to me, is concerning a little bit as well. I do think it's amazing that you have such a deep-rooted faith and that you are excited to share and discuss that with your peers. I personally just don't know that the way that it would have to be as an after-school club without an official capacity, the way that our policies are written, right, the way that we, to have like a stipended advisor, would be concerning to me, just because of the volatile nature of some people's interpretation of how it could be, and with the name. I do think faith was more encompassing and maybe would lead to more, like, constructive conversations about different types of faith aside from Christianity, where you guys could maybe come to an understanding. But even that, again, without having an advisor that would be allowed to intervene, should people's passions get really elevated on either side, that's concerning to me. And with it being a public school system and the whole separation of church and state kind of thing, that sort of, it plays in the back of my mind as well. So I'm definitely interested to hear what the attorney has to say.
Yeah. I can also add that anything that was, the club is, you can do anything that you are comfortable doing. So for example, you mentioned fasting. If somebody is not comfortable with fasting, they do not have to fast. If someone wants to come in just to look around and see what the club is about, they can do that. If somebody's not comfortable praying, they don't have to pray. If they're not comfortable worshiping, they don't have to worship. The person that walks through the door the second that the meeting starts is comfortable to do in the appropriate manner, to do whatever they want to do. And I don't know if Ms. Lucier wants to add, that it is a student-led club. Having an advisor, at least from my point of view, I can start a conversation and ask her thoughts on something. So for example, when you brought up that if something, a conversation escalates or something does get brought up, I can start a conversation with Ms. Lucier and bring her into the conversation, and it wouldn't necessarily be an issue with someone saying that, oh, she started the conversation because I was the one that initiated it. And I don't know if you have any other questions regarding this point.
I think, let's hear from Mr. Pagnini, who's the lawyer for the school district, who's done some research on this subject. So Greg, if you're there, could you maybe give your opinions?
Yep. I'm here. I'm happy to give you a little bit of an overview of the applicable law. So we, really, the statute on point is the Equal Access Act. And that basically says, I'm going to paraphrase, but give the concept that if you're a secondary school and you meet certain criteria, that, and I don't think that is an issue here, that the public school then must treat any kind of student-initiated group equally, regardless of what might be the religious, political, or philosophical nature of the group, to the extent that the school has already allowed other non-curricular groups to have initiated a different student-initiated group. So in other words, if the district has, and I thought maybe Matt or someone else had already mentioned this, a non-curricular group, and again, a student-led, student-initiated group, like the Chess Club, for example, and I'm just using that as an example, I don't know if this is entirely accurate, but if there is something along the lines of a Chess Club or other student-initiated group that meets in non-school hours, then under the Equal Access Act, the idea is, well, okay, if you're allowing this group to do that, then regardless of any kind of religious or political or philosophical underpinning, the district has the, is required to allow any other group to do that as well, because you have then created what is called the limited public forum, which I think the chair had alluded to before, and that's correct. So the issue becomes basically a matter of equal access, as the statute says, that different groups, although having a different purpose, if qualifying under the same reasons, meaning they're a non-curricular group, they're student-initiated and not on student, I'm sorry, on school time, then there's an equal right to use the facility. That does come with some caveat. And I don't necessarily know that they're applicable here, but I'll mention them briefly. You know, there's, of course, built into the statute, safety, health and safety precautions. I don't think that's necessarily an issue here. But also the idea of, okay, we've got a student-led group, to what extent can a member of the administration or staff participate? And the answer effectively is, well, they can't, they can monitor, again, as I think the chair had said, but they can't lead the discussion, they can't participate in the discussion, because then you get into the possibility that someone is viewing a staff member, a member of the public school or public employee endorsing a kind of private speech, and that would cross the line. So for those reasons, you wouldn't have a staff member participating in the club. But to the question of if the club has the legal right to request use of the facility like other similarly situated student-initiated clubs, the answer to that is yes. Happy to answer questions, but that's kind of it in a nutshell in terms of the legal elements that go into assessing if a club, be it the Jesus Club or Faith Club, stands on equal footing as, say, the Chess Club.
Can I ask a question, Greg?
Yes.
So if the Chess Club, though, has an advisor and was created by the school, not necessarily student-led, and if we have not designated a limited open forum... student-led, and if we have not designated a limited open forum, that would mean we would have to designate a limited open forum first tonight if we wanted this club to be able to be creative? Is that correct?
Well, yeah. Whether or not the district has created a limited open forum is based upon whether or not there has already been the existence of other non-curricular student-initiated clubs. That I'm not so sure the answer to, based on just sort of the discussion so far. I thought maybe someone said the chess or other type of club sort of would qualify, but I would have to leave that to sort of the committee. But if the understanding is that other non-curricular clubs have operated within the district or school buildings after hours, then that would be the operation of a limited public forum, such that the district should then allow a different, equally, on equal footing club like the Faith Club or Jesus Club to do the same.
So if we have, for example, we have a drama club, or, as an example, but it's not technically student-led, does that mean, does that qualify as us always establishing a limited open forum?
Do we have any student-led?
So it would need, it would need to be a student-led group. So that the non-curricular student groups are ones that are student-initiated, they must be student-sponsored and student-led, and they must have a voluntary participation.
Right.
So if it qualifies under those elements, then you would already have, assuming there's other groups in existence, a limited open forum.
April, and then Mr. Palladino.
Do we have any student-led, non-advisory, after-school clubs in existence at the high school?
No, we do not for liability reasons, because the students need to be properly supervised after hours. But I would argue that almost every club was created in a similar fashion as this over the years. I've been here somewhere between 12 and 15 times asking for pilot clubs to be approved.
So I'm looking at the Equal Access Act, and it says that for religious-oriented student group meetings, employees of the school cannot participate in the meeting, they can only act as an overseer. So where you said that you would bring her into the conversation, she can't. So that, again, leads to my, as a possible concern. And I'm not saying that this is going to happen, but this is also a time of, you know, in the world right now where this is a very divisive topic. And for whatever that reason is. And again, I think that it's incredible that you're going through this process and that you believe so strongly in this. I just, whereas there is no other student group, you know, that currently exists for our district, and whereas we can't give you an advisor, that just, that's a big concern for me, especially as Mr. Palladino said, liability-wise. So that's my thought on that right now.
Jeff?
So Greg, let's assume, and I'm sure Mr. Palladino is correct, certainly during his tenure there, which goes back a long time, let's assume that this club would represent a precedent with respect to the role of the advisor. Does, does, does this school committee have the right to say, okay, this could be something we could support, but do we have the right to say we don't want to set that precedent?
I think it's more a matter of, and I don't know if I'm stating the concept of what you just said a little bit differently or not, Jeff, but in my view, it's really more about whether or not there already is a limited open forum or not. And if there is a limited open forum, then this club, just like any other club, like the chess club, should have equal access regardless of the, you know, the orientation of the club.
I get that part.
Equal access.
Yeah, I get that part, but what I'm asking for, what I'm asking is if there is no precedent for an advisor having no role other than an overseer and cannot interact with the students during their meetings. If there is no precedent for that, do we have the legal right to say, okay, maybe it could be done, but we do not want to set that precedent for X, Y, Z reasons?
Yeah. Right. So there are certain restrictions on the ability to have a club within the district, as I had mentioned, you know, health and safety, et cetera. And if there's a, you know, if there is a need to monitor the club for safety purposes, et cetera, and no one available to do that, then if I'm understanding the question correctly, I suppose, yes, that is a different precedent, meaning, hey, we've got other clubs, but they have people available to monitor them, et cetera, but we don't have one here, then that could potentially separate it apart from other clubs because there is no ability to monitor it, for example.
No, I'm not, that's a different question.
Different precedent.
That's a different question. What I'm saying is, let's say there is someone who is willing to play this role of non-interacting overseer, okay?
Yep.
Even though, I'm not sure who would monitor whether they are in fact non-interacting, but putting that aside, and Mr. Palladino, in his wisdom, decided, I don't actually want to set that precedent for whatever reasons, because I want the advisor to have the ability to actually advise, to actually interact, because that justifies the cost associated with that advisor and the value that that represents. I'm asking whether, whether we have the right to say, no, we don't have any of those non-advisory type of positions, and we don't want to have one that doesn't have an advisory role for a variety of reasons. Do we have that right?
Yeah. And if I'm understanding correctly, then I think you do, because you cannot have someone who would otherwise be in advisory role participating in this group for the reasons that I said earlier. So if that's the understanding that they would have to participate, then no, they can't do that for what the reasons I said before. And I think that answers what you said.
Right. But if we had to monitor, though, say, just to supervise behavior, so let's say kids were running around and they were getting loud, and they just say, hey, you guys, you got to cool it, calm down. That's not participating, right? That's just monitoring.
But that would, no, that would not be participating, in my view. That would be more of a monitoring role.
Okay. Mr. Palladino.
So I just looked up all the clubs to try and find a comparable, and I think that I can find a comparable to what Greg's saying, and it's in the Safe School Alliance, it's also called the GSA Club. And if I can read this, just, it's only a paragraph, paragraph, excuse me. It's a student-run group that meets regularly to discuss topics within the LGBTQ plus straight community. The GSA is a student-run club that brings together LGBTQI plus and straight students to support each other and provide a safe place to socialize. The GSA meetings run every other week unless an additional meeting for special events is needed. All students and staff are welcome to attend the GSA meeting. So this is as close as I can get for you as to something.
They meet during school, though?
It's a, it's a club, so it's after school.
It's after school.
Your advisor paid?
There is a paid advisor, but again, it's student-run. She's there for supervisory purposes.
But the way that the wording is in this act is that a, an advisor could not be paid or participate because of the religious connotation of the group?
I agree with the participation piece. I would want this, and I think Maria wants it, more student-driven. We would, obviously, we're going to need a classroom, we're going to need students to be supervised, we're going to have to make sure everyone gets home. But I don't want to speak for you guys, but I think that's really what you've been looking for. And I think allowing it to happen more organically without adult influence allows, I think, for a safer environment, in my, in my opinion.
Can I ask a question? You would be willing to advise this club as a volunteer with no stipend against your contract?
Monitor, monitor.
Or monitor, I'm sorry, not advise.
I would be honored to monitor as a volunteer position, yes.
And there are countless cases where, you know, our teachers volunteer on their own. You know, I could, this, from coaching to, we have other people that volunteer as assistants for a club, we have an assistant who volunteers for drama, for cheerleading, and I could go on and on. So it's not, it's definitely in past practice on many, many occasions. We have coaches that volunteer and don't take a stipend.
And I assume you would be unwilling, and I'm not coercing you, okay? I'm just asking, okay? I assume you'd be unwilling to call this the Faith Club instead of the Jesus Club.
I'm gonna stand my ground and say that I want it to be called the Jesus Club.
I suspected you would say that.
Technically, according to this Equal Access, we can't ask her to change the name.
So Greg.
I have it up, just so you know. I was like looking at it, very in-depth.
Put another way, so if we have the GSA, which is a student-run club right now, can we legally vote? No. Or can we vote anyway?
Yeah. Yeah. So in my view, if you already have a non-curricular student-initiated group, then, then yes, you would have to allow this one as well.
Any other questions for Greg from the committee members? Or any other statements? Joyce?
My question is, in the future, so if another group, not you, another group that wasn't in the best interest of students, in our opinion, came to us and asked to have a student-run group, by approving this, as Jeff said, would we be creating a precedent, which maybe we already have if we have the student alliance, would we be creating a precedent where we wouldn't be able to say no to any group? Because that's kind of what I just heard him say.
So did you hear that question, Greg?
I think I did, and maybe I can try to restate it just to make it clear if I did, but I didn't. I think that came from Joyce, I'm not sure.
Yes.
But, okay, and I think the question was, well, if I heard you correctly, Greg, if, you know, we have to do it in the sense that there was another non-curricular group, does that mean that we have to do any other group that comes in here? So short answer, in a sense, yes, that's exactly what the Equal Access Act is all about. However, there are limitations based on what the nature of the group was. So if it was the knife-fighting club that wanted to come in and do this, and it's clearly going to be, you know, a potential danger, then we will look at it from that way. But if it's, you know, the Dungeons and Dragons club, which does not, we'll go out on a limb and say this, really pose any kind of a risk to anybody, then, no, then that would, that would likely fall within the Equal Access Act's parameters as well.
According to this act, the only way that we would be, we would kind of, sort of, if, without, with that precedent being set with the other group, would be if there's anything in our existing district policy that says anything specific about religion that we can deny the group for that reason. I just don't know what our, where, or if that, if we have a policy on that specifically within the district, but according to the EAA in its form right here, that's one of the, one of the ways it could be, would be if whatever group, not necessarily religious, but I was just using that because that's the example in front of us, but if there is any particular group that did want to form that was student-led or otherwise, that had anything that was written in our district policy, and I'll say, because I'm the chair of the Policy Review Committee, I just can't remember if we have a policy specifically stating this, but if there was a group that wanted to put something that would be against any of the policies we have in the district, then we would be able to deny whether or not it's discriminatory or not.
I think, too, in regards to clubs, there's a process to get to this point. And if we deemed that it wasn't appropriate for students, wasn't safe, we wouldn't be in front of you. And then we also, it's, you know, we usually do one of these every two years.
Mr. Swett?
So I think the Supreme Court got it wrong two years ago when they, with regard to the football coach. I'm a coach. A coach has, most of the time, a significant influence over players. So to me, all I could imagine was players who are on the sidelines, watching the coach go to the middle of the field and thinking, if I don't join this coach, I'm not going to get playing time, so I'm going to go join this coach. And to me, that kind of indirect, but very real ability to coerce a player into doing something that they don't want really want to do makes that a bad decision. If, for example, we had this gay, straight, LGBTQ situation, and, and I had any feeling that there was a, an attempt by the leaders of this club to convince people who were not straight, okay, that if you just follow my lead, I can convince you that, take some drugs, do something, and you won't be gay anymore. And we know there are people who are convinced of that with regard to people who are gay, that it's a problem with them that can be solved with whatever, okay? Then I would be adamantly opposed to that club. Now, don't take this the wrong way, but when I hear that part of your role in this, in establishing this club reason is to proselytize on behalf of Christianity, even though I totally respect your right to do that in the context of your church, I see that as analogous to trying to convince an agnostic, an atheist, a person of Jewish faith, an Islam faith, that they're wrong, okay? They should be Christians. I've had someone in my family convince me I can't be a good person if I'm not a Christian. We know what's going on in college campuses today. You have terrible situations. Half a dozen or more college presidents have been forced to resign because they can't handle the antisemitism, the anti-Palestinian, the whatever that's going on on a college campus. I think we're all naive if we think that this club is going to be as beautiful as I know you want it to be, okay? So I see it as, as a potential problem because of your good-faith belief that you have a responsibility to proselytize on behalf of Christianity. So notwithstanding all our legal advice, that I just can't get comfortable with it, even though I want you to be a great Christian and to go to church and to feel good about yourself because of your faith.
Yeah. I also just want to restate that anybody is welcome. And again, whoever steps in the room is comfortable to do whatever they want to do and comfortable to believe whatever they want to believe.
And I believe you.
And so from your point of view, I understand your point of view 100%, because I have heard it from my friends and I've heard it from other people. But this is, this club is for anyone, and whoever does feel that way can speak up about it. And it's their right to speak up about it. And this is also why I want to open this club, because it's about love, and it's about family, and it's about community. So anybody that doesn't feel comfortable to open up and explain themselves does have the right to.
April, and then I'm going to wrap this up and bring it to a vote.
So I'm really conflicted. Again, more, more the advisory and being able to, because I know that myself, if I was a, an overseer, I have a very hard time biting my tongue in situations when I hear, you know, kids doing things, right? Everyone knows I have a hard time biting my tongue. It's not a shock, I know. My other thing is I'm also like a firm believer in the First Amendment. I want you to be able to say and believe and truly follow where, where you are, right? And what, what matters to you, and be able to communicate that effectively and respectfully and in a way that is true to who you are and follows, you know, what you want to do. So I'm conflicted on the role and the purpose. Again, I do agree with Jeff, the way that you presented it. And it could be just the way that you said it, it might not be what you actually think. I don't know that you're actually going to be like preaching and trying to, you know, lead breadcrumbs and get people to follow you. I don't think that that's your intention. I think the way that it was worded when you first, you know, said that it was your duty to do that, I don't know that that's necessarily, and I, that could be my interpretation, I don't know that that's exactly what you meant. Because then your other statements have been, you want to create dialogue regarding your faith and have, this is why you believe this, and this is why you believe that. And I think like with any, like even like a debate club, if we have one, I don't know, where you have opposing sides of, of political affiliation that are going to be able to have a constructive conversation about your disagreement without it, you know, getting to the point where it is contentious, which is what I think my fear is, right? Because we're, we're given, even as adults right now, examples on a national stage of opposition and contention and not being a safe place to have a differing opinion and be able to take that and not try to sort of beat down the other person with your, this is why I'm right, this is, you know, and that's on the national stage right now. And so I worry a little bit about that because of the role that, and I guess specifically Christianity, because there is that, you know, sort of extremist side right now that's being brought to the forefront about Christian nationalism. side right now that's being brought to the forefront about Christian nationalism and about the, you know, there's extremists on every side of every, everything you do, right? And I don't necessarily fear, feel that that's your intention, right? And I don't think that that's ever anyone's intention, however, I, I do worry without having the ability to have an advisor be able to rein things in, that it could snowball. Not that I'm saying that it would, but I, I see the potential with the state of the world right now. And I know you have another student here who's just get to sit there, so I don't know if you have anything that you want to add, you know, about your thoughts on the club, on any of the thoughts that we've, you know, brought up or any of the concerns, if you want to address them as well, as a different, you know, perspective.
Actually, I do have a little bit to say. Just to piggyback on like what you said, the advisor kind of thing, I think, I think, not even to persuade you guys on anything else, but I know Maria. She's, she's amazing. She gets everything done. She, she's always, you know, she's on her stuff, and I think having the student type of environment gives the students a safer place than just having to, you know, "Oh, Ms. Lucier's here," you know? But this is, it's more of a safer place with being able to talk to someone you kind of can relate to and someone you can kind of be comfortable with. So I think, with it being in Maria's hands, I think she, like if this goes her decision and what we want decision to be, she won't let nobody down. This is going to be, this will be a great idea, and like you said, a healthy activity.
So one other question for Mr. Palladino, and then I'll, like whoever else, but I know that when, with most of the other clubs that have been presented, right, we get an idea of what these meetings are going to look like, if there's a minimum, you know, amount of people that are, you know what I mean?
Right.
Do we have any sort of like specifics on what the requirements would be for this club? And like, do you have like a, you know, parameters for like how the meetings would be run? Like, is there a time limit? Like, most of the clubs, it's like, this club runs for 45 minutes after school, they, or if it's like the film club, for example, they watch a movie and then they discuss that movie. So we know specifically what that club is going to do. So I'm just curious, I know it's been a little bit broad, but most of the clubs that have come to us have been very specific in the way that their, you know, club will run. So I'm just wondering if there's any more specificity with like, how many, is there going to be like a minimum? Like, the club can only exist if there is more than X, Y, Z numbers. I don't know if those exist for other--
You got the list for the, with the kids that are interested, right?
I, I don't think, I don't know.
No, we don't have that, did not.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, I did not get that.
Okay, I apologize. They've got almost 20 kids that are extremely interested, and what I've seen over the, over the time is, you know, it's kind of like, once you get something going, the energy evolves and you get more kids, and some of these kids may drop off, but I think they've got a strong number of students that are committed, and I think they'll have even more, you know, if they're approved and they can get this off the ground. In regards to times, traditionally, they meet at least two times a month, they could meet as many as four times. It really depends on how the kids want to get this going. It's, can only meet, the most it could meet is once a week, the least it could meet is twice a month, so somewhere in that range. Traditionally, we keep things to an hour for almost all meetings, except for like, you know, chess club, obviously, those matches can go on for quite a while, but it's traditionally an hour. It actually goes back to the late buses, because we used to have late buses that would show up at 3:15. We got out at 2:15, it was always an hour, now it's 2:10. But it's, that's kind of the, as far as the makeup, but it's, a lot of these, like you heard with the description of the Safe Alliance Club, it's, there's, it's loose, it's really student-driven based on the students' needs, concerns, and, and they create the agenda. The, the idea is, and I was an advisor when I was a teacher for a couple of clubs, and it was, I was there to supervise, to make sure there was no liability on the schools' front. This was, this, the idea is, this is students having the opportunity to lead and learn. And certainly, we've got to make sure everything's appropriate and we're not, you know, making headlines in the newspaper.
Yeah, and I agree with that, but so, my, one more thing, because you brought it up, is like, I know a lot of other, we have like the Key Club, right?
Sure.
Which goes off and does like volunteer stuff.
Right.
And I know that like, I'm guessing, I'm just, that a lot of faith-based is around service, so I don't, like, how would that work with a non-stipended employee if they wanted to do any sort of community service with, under the schools, like?
I don't know, yeah, so--
Is that something we need to ask Greg about?
Well, I think, you know Maria's not shy, you've seen that.
Or fundraising or anything.
She knows my offices. If there's initiative that they want to incorporate into the club, certainly I'd be there to support them with, you know, making sure that they have proper supervision, because you're right, it's not fair to rely or request someone that's volunteering their time after school for an hour every other week to then be available on a Saturday to supervise a group of kids. So we, we would work through that and, and make sure everything was properly supervised and everything was above board. Like I said, Maria's not shy. She'll come in my office, knock on the door and ask me questions, not even pertaining to this. She's willing to, to move forward and make sure that things are done appropriately.
I also want to touch on that point. I am in three different sports, and I am part of many other different clubs, so I do understand your point of view and where you are coming from. It's service-wise, whoever feels comfortable, has the time, has the opportunity and wants to join, then they can 100%. And also agreeing with Mr. Palladino said, taking charge of making sure that it's safe, I myself would not put something out into the open that is not safe for other students to do. So I also just wanted to make that point very clear. I would not put something that is harmful in any way, shape, or form in someone else's path. Thank you.
Joyce?
So I just want to offer a compromise. So if we were to make a motion, if I were to make a motion to approve the club for this school year, and then ask that they come back at the end of the school year and report back to us, I mean, that's something that means that's, so all I can do is make that motion. The committee has to vote, but I just think, you know, that would maybe give us a, a better idea of what, right now, we don't really know, right? So that would, and then if you came back at the end of the year, and we can talk about it again and make the decision going forward from there. So I, I would, I would make a motion that we approve the club for this school year pending, you know, a review, have you come back at the end of the school year for a meeting.
Do we have a second for that motion?
Second.
Have a second? All right, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Opposed?
With great respect to both of you and your volunteer, no.
And abstain, zero. So passes 3-1. Thank you for your time, and I hope you appreciate the discussion and the thoughtful dilemma in a way that the school committee is in and trying to see all sides of this. And thank you, Mr. Pagnini, for joining us. We will, we'll let you go now.
Yeah, my pleasure. Thanks. An interesting issue. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Can I get those guys quiet back if that's okay?
Oh, yeah.
Thank you all for being here.
So, yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Maria, you shouldn't be concerned about the fact that you will graduate someday.
Trying to keep it for another year. I'm not winning that battle.
Thank you.
Graduating.
Thanks. All right, so thank you, everybody. Next up, we have the principal reports and MCAS report. Mr. Palladino, I guess you're going first.
Oh, I was--
Well, I don't know, you're up here, or you're just packing up?
Well, I think there's an--
All right, we'll go in order of the actual document.
I think it's in order of the slideshow, and I'm at the end.
All right, let's go with Dr. Chandler. We'll start first then, with Wareham Elementary School?
I think Matt's going first.
Okay, Jimmy, you can begin.
Sure.
Take it away, Dr. DeAndrea. You may.
Just open things up a little bit here. So tonight, we'll present the MCAS results. Principals will be working with their school councils, going to be using this information to develop their school improvement plans with their school councils. That will be part of, I think it's a November--
21st.
It's a November 21st meeting in which the school improvement plans will be presented to the school committee. I want to say thank you to the principals for all their work in putting this presentation together, and I thought that I would start with just a brief overview of the, the Mass Accountability System. And so you can see on this slide that the accountability system for schools is break, broken into two components. It has a normative component, which is really just kind of a, it's a percentile from 1 to 99 that, for, for each school, and it's a snapshot of the achievement relative to other schools in the state that are in the same grade configuration, or at least a similar grade configuration. And then on the other side, the other component is, is a criterion referenced component. And this is where schools are given targets in certain areas, and you can see the list there, academic achievement, student growth, high school completion, ELL, chronic absenteeism, and advanced coursework. So schools are assigned a target in each of those areas and receive a percentile based on their progress towards those targets. Schools are then put into a category, either they're not requiring assistance or intervention, or they are requiring assistance or intervention. And then even within those two categories, there are subcategories, can be school of recognition, as you know, last year, the elementary school was designated a school of recognition, and then they have meeting or exceeding targets, substantial progress, moderate progress, or limited, or no progress, and that depends on how, how they did in their targets. I'm happy to say that all three of our schools fall into the first category, not requiring assistance or intervention. So, this slide shows that there are 1,827 schools in Massachusetts. 217 of these schools received the classification of insufficient data, and there's a number of different reasons why a school might fall into that category, but the remaining 1,610 schools, 82% of those schools were classified of not requiring assistance or intervention, and then 18% were requiring assistance. And so this is where our schools fell. What they do here is, it's, it's a cumulative criterion reference target percentage. They use 2023 and 2024, and the annual percentages from each year are combined into a weighted average with a little bit more weight on, on the most recent year. So, using that formula, each of our schools, you can see the Wareham Elementary School was 70, 70% with substantial progress, middle school 61% substantial progress, and Wareham High School 42% moderate progress towards targets. So that's a, a brief overview, and, and the principals will speak a little bit about each of those categories as they go through their report. So first up, we have the elementary school.
Thank you, Dr. DeAndrea. So I will review with you our grade three achievement and growth in ELA in mathematics, as well as grade four. We have a lot to celebrate and some areas of where we continue to need growth. Here you can see that we are climbing slowly but surely. Actually, last year we had a big jump, as you are aware, from 16 to 35% accountability. This year, we had a lower growth of a plus-two, but we are moving forward. So, this is where we're at, but as you can see from 2019, this is, this is substantial growth. And here is our achievement, not our growth, but our achievement here. I want to point out to you, this is just over time. You can slowly see that the gap is shortening. We are not widening the gap, but the gap is getting inches closer to meeting with the state. So I just want you to look through that. For grade three, this is grade three ELA achievement and grade three mathematical achievement. Again, proud to announce that, especially in mathematics, this year, we're just four points away, and you can see from 493 to 495, so we are very close to meeting the state there in grade three mathematics, and three points away of the average scale in ELA. And this is pretty much a significant change from six points to three points, so we are closing that gap slowly but surely. In grade four here, you'll see our accountability achievement compared to the state. We dipped a little in ELA. This is a group last year, I don't know if you remember as well, my grade three, that cohort scored lower than the grade four. Well, here's this, the same cohort here that has just more work to do for a myriad of reasons, but we have, we're working through that, and again, I will point out though, in our math achievement, we are working through a lot. We got, we did really well in math. We'll talk a lot about that. So this is just some of the change, but I did want to point out that you can see that ELA is an area of concern, and you'll see it on the next slide here, especially in achievement. So, in this slide, you'll see the points awarded. So this is where I look at, and it's very, a very, a simple read, and you can see where we are really making the mark and where we're not. Achievement is a concern. ELA achievement was a zero when it came to points earned. So you see that right there, and that's a red flag. It is. So I, I know it, I recognize it, and it's our job to work through that. However, right below that, in mathematics, it's a four out of four. So we scored all of the points in mathematics. In lowest performing students, and this is, includes special needs area here, we have more points earned. So we see in English Language Arts, two out of four, and again, in mathematics, four out of four. In growth, we've made good, some progress, again, two out of four in ELA, I would have liked to seen that to be a three out of four. Typically, we do have significant growth, and then a three out of four in each of those areas. The other zero of which I have concern is the chronic absenteeism. Now, although at the end of the year, we reported 93 point, yeah, 93.4 of all students, my attendance rate, we said it every month, 93%, 93%. Well, the state has it, 93.4% of all students were attending. However, those students who, and so the, so those students who weren't attending, and the chronic leave of absence was, was where we got the zero. So, that's going to be continued an area of focus. It was last year too. We put interventions in place, but we need more of an effective solution there. So I'm going to go back. Questions? Ideas?
Jeff?
Jeff?
So, I love numbers, but I also hate them in some ways. I look at third grade, by the way, the way I look at things, and I, I've been doing this now for a while, is how are we comparing to the state average for meets and exceeds?
Mm-hmm.
Okay? And so, when I look at, and you've, you've alluded to this, for math for grade three, we made dramatic progress, 56% to 93%. I mean, that's, that's nothing short of dramatic. For fourth, grade, and that's the good news, for grade four ELA, we went from 98% to 59%. That's dramatic also, in the reverse direction. So, in quality control verbiage, there's something called normal variation, and then there's something that actually you caused to happen. So my question for you is, with these kind of dramatic changes, given the fact that we're talking about, what, 150 to 200 kids, right?
Yes. Two, well, there's two grades, 340, well, for grade three and four.
I'm talking about third grade and fourth grade.
Oh, yes, okay, yes.
Okay? What did you do to make those, that, those positive changes happen, and what happened to cause that major negative to happen? Because unless I know what happened and why it happened, the numbers are just numbers.
And I spoke to faculty council, school council, and the staff, and we're working, we're working through that, through the school improvement plan. I will say this, for mathematics, it is most definitely the curriculum we're teaching and the knowledge piece we're teaching. and the knowledge piece we're teaching when it comes to the new curriculum of Bridges. In addition to the practice that is given on a daily basis, we have incentivized automaticity to a point where children go home on their own without their parents accord and want to do ST math, want to do extra math because they are earning points, they are getting accolades for it and they're doing it on their own. This system is not in place with ELA. We talked about it and Joyce happened to be at the school council meeting we had the other day where I don't see the children having the incentive to go home and read and write. They're not practicing it enough. We're teaching it all the day long, we're working through it as hard as we can and we're implementing our new reading and writing program, Amplify, along with Empowering Writers. They're not getting enough practice.
So, you're saying that the math program in third grade is engaging students to want to do it at home?
Independently.
Independently and that's great, okay? But you're saying we aren't able to achieve the same level of engagement in ELA?
Reading.
Is that a curriculum issue? What is it?
It's a reading, I mean, reading, it's a reading issue. It's reading. It's reading and writing and motivation.
But why the lack of engagement is my question?
Technology. Why read a book if you can watch TikTok?
It's the motivation, Jeff.
Why do math if you can watch TikTok?
It's a video game.
It's a video game. It's incentivized. It is.
It's true.
I'm going to be honest with you.
I'm not rolling my eyes because you're wrong.
I know, but it is.
I'm rolling my eyes because...
It is. They earn points, you know, the little penguin comes over, like, it's a game for them and their parents are allowing them to go on it because it's educational.
It's part of, yeah.
So, what is the solution to creating engagement?
We're working on it.
We actually said the words the other day at the meeting, read to succeed, remember that?
Yeah. We're working on incentivizing reading and writing again in order to get more practice. Our school hours are not enough time for children to get the practice that they need to be able to be meeting and exceeding on the MCAS when it comes to reading and writing. There's not enough time in the day.
So, you're working on it. What does that mean? You're working on trying to find a better curriculum?
No, no, it's not the curriculum. It's about the motivation.
To read.
How are you going to achieve that? That sounds really difficult.
It is.
We're going to do it together, right?
We did it before.
We were at the school council, we did it before, we did read to succeed before. We're not saying we're going to necessarily do read to succeed, but we have to create an incentive program for children, for them to read and write more. They also have to learn how to write and we're working. Dr. DeAndrea has brought in Empowering Writers. Dr. DeAndrea and I had a meeting with Empowering Writers. They're going to work to infuse Empowering Writers into our new reading curriculum, Amplify. But our children just need to write more and that's it.
Thank you. April?
So, I remember when summer reading was like a whole different thing, right? So, when I was in elementary school, I know in high school, we got more of like specific things we had to read, but I remember it being like a contest, like whoever read the most books over the summer and I was very competitive and I liked to read. So, I would go to the library, I was constantly reading. I wanted to have the most books read by the time the summer and then by the time I was in high school, my favorite class was individualized popular fiction. I literally just sat and we could read whatever books we wanted and then we would just have a preformed sheet to write out like a book report that was then public, they'd pick the best ones to put in the school newspaper, kind of a thing. You know what I mean?
Absolutely.
So, it was like, it is tough without, with limited library hours or, you know, when people are doing storytime as babysitting or something to occupy their kid on a Saturday morning before sports, before, you know, things kind of have gotten, you know, so many other things that kids are doing, especially with the technology. Would, I know that like obviously like they have their Chromebooks, they have, I know the younger ones sometimes have the tablets or whatever, is there like almost like a Kindle program that they have or something?
We have Epic. We have Epic as an online library, so students have access.
But is there like, you know, like see the thermometer in the class with the number of books you read as like a competition?
Right.
Because I feel like kids are very competitive. Like I know I was, I wanted to have the most, like I wanted to read the most books and we could read whatever we wanted. There was no limit as long as you had a minimum of like, you had three books, depending on the grade, you had to read over the summer with no specific title, you know? And I think that taking away the specific book, I know that high school, it's a whole different situation, but I don't, I remember even when Dylan was in, you know, going through middle school, we had specific books you had to read.
We don't have a specific book anymore.
So, I think like if there's like, you know, a contest, like who can read the most outside and even if it's like, if there's kids, I know that there's like, you guys have Wilson specialists and things like that for the kids that struggle or have like, you know, dyslexia or tutoring or anything like that to still be competitive, I just don't know if...
Oh, we can, yeah. And you'll see that as part of our school improvement plan.
Working on it.
We're working on it, yeah. And also, the other part of the good news is that typically, chronically, special education has fallen short on the MCAS and our results from the Wareham Elementary School showed significant progress and including ELA. My one area that I had high growth was students with disabilities. So, programs like Wilson, those programs are working and remember, we're testing way more students than we ever have before. I had six alternate tests, six students on alternative. Everybody else was tested in the building.
Wow.
Can I assume that with the lowest performing students, you have already identified those that have been on the absentee?
Yes.
Low end of the absentee or the high end, I guess?
Yes.
And you're working with them to sort of try to get that up?
Yes.
Because that would certainly help the overall...
Absolutely. I mean, last year, we had the court in our building with a state program, so it's something that we've continued to work on. We need to continue to work on it some more to gain those points in that area. This is a concern.
Jeff? Just a quick question. I'm getting into debates with people I know around ballot question number two?
Two.
Two. And one of the things I'm told is, you know, teachers are just teaching to the test and I say to them and I try to be convincing, we don't do that, okay? I'm accurate, correct?
You are accurate.
And I'm asking that not because I don't know the answer you're going to give me, because I want the world to know, we're not doing it.
We teach the standards.
Yeah.
We teach the standards through the materials that we've purchased, including the Amplify and the Bridges program. So, we're using those programs.
And there's no way to teach to the test.
We familiarize the students to the platform is what we do. We familiarize them to the platform so they understand that it is online. We have them get used to it to practice so they know what is to be expected, but it certainly doesn't, it's certainly not an everyday thing.
Especially when they're in third grade and they're typing an essay.
Yes, I mean, let's recognize that as well. That came up too, typing, making sure that we can type.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Keep trending in the right direction. Thank you. All right?
Oh, wait. I didn't need to do that, sorry.
All right, good evening.
Good evening.
So, the middle school has three grades. We have achievement and growth in all three grades in two subjects, ELA and math and in science, just achievement. So, remember, we can get SGP's, student growth percentiles for students in ELA and math because they've taken the test before, so that's how you get the SGP. In science, they only take the science exam in fifth and eighth and in 10th, obviously. So, that's how we are scored within our accountability. So, the middle school, we are climbing. In 2017, when we started the next gen, we were in the 20th. According to accountability data, it was the 20th percentile. We're at 44. That's 24 points since 2017. We gained five points last year. According to the state, that's worth celebrating. We're celebrating at Wareham Middle School. We're celebrating every year and we're climbing and Jeff, you asked for reasons of why this is happening. I have reasons, I'll share at the end. Fifth grade ELA and math, you can see, yes, the achievement, we want every student to be proficient. We want every student to be exceeding. We're not there. It's going to be an uphill climb. Until we're at 80% at each grade level, it's very difficult to intervene when you have the reversed triangle and we've talked about that reversed triangle before. We're intervening with 80% and 20% are proficient or exceeding. That's our upside down triangle and until you can turn that a little bit around and you have to remember, we're intervening without interventionist. So, we can talk about, we have some Wilson, we do, we have some special ed teachers teaching some Wilson to some special ed students. We don't have interventionist. Science, we are extremely proud of our science scores this year. We have really, our fifth grade teachers have been working on their professional development in this area. We have some extremely exemplary teachers in fifth grade that are exceeding. The state is changing the science exam to make it more performance based, so everyone will have half the old test and half the new test this year. So, that will certainly change the scores. It will change the scores within the state. Supposedly, they're not counting the new half this year, but the next year, they will.
Ms. Cote comes and reminds us all the time at Wareham Elementary, make sure you're teaching science, make sure you're getting science knowledge in because they come quickly to...
So, the science in fifth grade is three years of standards. So, in eighth grade, it's three years of standards.
So, it's our job too.
Yeah. All right, and then sixth grade ELA and math, we've had a dip in sixth grade since the dawn of day, I can't explain it.
Puberty.
And then in seventh grade, it goes back up again, but it's frustrating to our sixth grade teachers, but constantly looking, diving deep into our data and assessing where we're at with that. Seventh grade ELA and math is next. You'll then see our accountability data. Our achievement again in ELA and math is not where we want it to be. Our growth, I want to see fours there, but we're at three. Our chronic absenteeism overall was awesome with our lowest performing students. Doesn't it make sense? Our lowest performing students are chronically absent.
What a surprise.
And I'm still fighting the battle. 25% of my students currently in grades five, six, and seven, 25% have been chronically absent.
Already?
Current, no, that from last year. 25% of my kids were chronically absent last year.
Boston is 35%.
But it's, I don't, it's just so frustrating to me.
That's a high number.
25% of them. So, I've already sent out letters. Those were my nice letters. How can we work with you? What can we do for you? How can, you know, we have ROI's to speak to doctors and counselors and...
Do you get responses?
I get angry responses.
For asking?
Yeah.
Like it's none of your business, don't ask me those questions?
Yeah, I get really angry parents.
Wow.
And that was my nice letter. My mean letter is about to go out, so I just, you know, it's not that I want them to be sick in school, no, that's not it. But if a child is sick more than five or 10 days in a year, I have to say what's going on and some, I know what's going on and those aren't the ones that are getting the letters, but I don't know, I just, we only have them 180 days. We need them there or we can't make a difference. That's just, that's a short amount of time as it is. So, it's a constant battle. I feel like we're making strides, but...
You should be commended on the healthy student growth percentile across all grade levels. It was very robot, I mean, it's hovering north of 50, which is what you want, so good job on that.
And, you know, that's an average, right? So, I have some really exemplary teachers, I do. Their SGP's are 80, unheard of, 75. So, they get averaged in, right? So, that's not even showing. I'm meeting one-on-one with those teachers right now, 80 and that teacher's sitting there saying, Tracy, it was awful. I go, you can't do any better than that. You're 80, 1.9, like, you know. Jeff asks, well, how are you making a difference? I have damn good teachers. I have damn good staff that work every single day with less, right? One less counselor, one less administrator, no interventions except for one accelerated math teacher. That's what we're left at with the middle school and I stand there and I tell them, we're going to do this. But that's what we have. We're down to bare bones and I'm not going to speak for Dr. Chandler, but I'm thinking that she is too. You know, we kept low class sizes because that's when we surveyed the staff, when I talked to my school council, that was what was most important. If we can keep anything, that's what we're going to keep and that's what we kept. But what else made a difference at Wareham? We allowed teachers to have a say. We didn't dictate a curriculum and say, this is where you have to be and on this page on this day. What I said to them is, I trust that you are a good educator. Show me what you can do. Now, we follow a standard, we follow the curriculum, but they may present it in a different way and that's okay unless when I have those meetings, their scores weren't 50 or above. And then we have those conversations. Small class sizes, focus on writing. We saw some real gains, you'll see in my school improvement plan in ELA and we attribute that to getting back on track after COVID. We are writing in the content area. We are having collaborations with ELA social studies and science teachers. We did provide intervention in ELA last year. We think that that made a difference. We've had a focus on attendance and discipline. You'll see that evidence next year and that helps getting them in school, having the behaviors under control. We had significant improvement in discipline last year, but remember, I'm down in administrator for this year. So, with that said, all of that combined, it's not just one thing. It's not just I can attribute it to a new curriculum or a new, and it takes time. So, Dr. Chandler has new curriculums at the elementary school. It's not just one year of a new curriculum. Actually, we see a dip usually when we implement a new curriculum. It takes time, so...
Jeff? Well, I actually think, especially with 25% chronic absenteeism, your results are really pretty remarkable. You have SGP's well above 50 in five out of the six categories that I look at and not just a little over 50.
Can I tell you my dots, Jeff?
Your what?
My darts. So, the cohorts that have the same demographics as we do at Wareham Middle School?
Oh, I know what you mean by dart, sorry, okay.
Athol, they were eight, we're 44. Gardner was nine, we're 44. Randolph was 17, we're 44. They all decreased. Ware, 36, close to us, they did increase, so congratulations Ware. Carver's at 58, demographics, nothing like us. ORR's at 56, they remain the same, they didn't improve. Bourne is at 30, they decreased. Just saying. So, when everyone wants to compare us to our surrounding towns or compare us to districts of the same demographics, we're doing a really good job.
And the numbers I'm looking at are three-year averages, so it's a trend.
Oh, oh, what was that?
It's almost a trend. I'd like, I'd like one more dot, one more dot in that trend.
One more year?
One more year and then I'll be absolutely saying it's a trend, okay? Because 22 was a nadir, 23 was up, 24 was up again, if you're up again in 25. And by the way, that's SGP's. Even absolute scores, the way I look at it, you held your own in seventh grade, but fifth grade and sixth grade are substantially up and no one went substantially down. So, you can pass on my kudos to your staff.
Thank you.
I wish I knew more about how you were doing it because you're basically saying it's a multi-variable thing.
It is, it's everything. It's everything, it's not just one thing.
The bottom line is, it appears to be working and one more dot and I'm going to be standing and applauding.
All right, thank you, Jeff. I'll hold you to it.
You can.
I have no questions. She can say it all.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you. All right, Mr. Palladino, high school?
All right, so we'll move on to the high school. And we're really happy with the progress we're making. Our accountability rating has improved, as you can see, by 14 points. Certainly making a lot of strides there. I'll kind of get into what we've done a little bit differently last year and continuing on with this year. When we move on to achievement and growth, in eighth grade ELA, the meet, met or exceeded plus seven. The average scale score were up six, slight dip of negative one in the growth. And then when we go to math, four points added to the met or exceeded, plus five in the average sales scaled score. And the SGP did go down in eighth grade math. We'll go on to science. For grade eight, we saw a 9% increase in the students that have met or exceeded and a 1% increase, a one-point increase in the scaled score. Moving on to grade 10, we saw in ELA, met or exceeded, we increased by four points. The scaled score went down by one and the SGP went up by one. When we go on to math, the met or exceeded went up by one. Scaled score was down by one and the SGP went up by 11. When we look at the points that were awarded, we earned points in achievement for English and math and science. Total was 10 out of 12, and this is for grade eight. When we look at growth, we did get a total of two points. We're really, as all schools are, really working on the chronic absenteeism. It's a challenge percentage-wise. It's in the teens as far as students that are chronically absent. We're trying to bring that down. We meet every week on this. And I do home visits with Officer Baptiste. We use the courts just like everyone else does. And so certainly, we're gonna continue to work on that with our eighth graders. And then we look at grade 10. Obviously, there's a lot more work that needs to be done with the achievement. Growth has shown some improvement. And then the last slide, looking at the points awarded. Same thing here. Points for the extended engagement, the four-year cohort graduate. And then we have six out of 12 there. Then we've got the absenteeism, advanced course completion for an additional four points. I'm really excited. Last year was the first year we had the core classes that were brought back. And what's significant about that is that the students in 10th grade that took the test last year had one year of the core course. Same thing with the eighth graders. They had one year. But when we really see the growth is when the students are able to be in there for ninth and 10th grade for two years of the core classes. So this cohort this year for 10th grade will have the opportunity to be in there for two classes. And this is a lot of remediation for students that have been identified to have gaps in their learning, to be behind in their learning, whether it be for math, English, in some cases it's for both. But we're very fortunate to have that back. You can look at the scores and you can identify when we cut those programs. And now you're able to identify when we brought those programs back. So having that remediation has certainly helped. And we anticipate the trend increasing again next year as we have a second year of students testing in 10th grade.
Scott, what is the dropout rate? So points awarded for that, you got zero out of four. What does that actually mean?
So they're looking for you to get the points. You have to reduce your dropout rate and.
So we had a target that we didn't meet at all.
Right, the target's kind of unrealistic, but it's.
Why?
Because it would be like a very small percentage of students dropping out.
Do they consider the students that end up in the PASS program dropout because they don't take MCAS?
Oh, they take MCAS.
Oh, they do?
Oh, absolutely. They get a high school diploma. They have to take the MCAS.
Okay, I wasn't.
We'll see how that goes in a few weeks, but they have to take the MCAS. So what happens with those students is, as long as they're enrolled in the PASS program, when the state is taking a snapshot, you know, whether it be October 1st, March 1st, July 1st, when they're reading, as long as they're engaged at that point in time, they do not count as dropouts. But what can happen is if the student's out of school during that timeframe, there'll be a dropout. But then they'd be considered re-engaged. So if the PASS program had a large enough cohort, they would get credit for those kids being re-engaged. We get credit as well if we bring kids back that may have dropped out. And that's why you see we have some engagement credits as well for re-engaging students that were dropouts.
Jeff?
Go ahead.
April.
Well, I was just gonna say, I know that you guys have, for the past couple of years, have been focused on the chronic absenteeism.
All of us have, correct?
No, I'm just saying, from what I, from my, the school committee conference last year, we're not alone in that. Like, that's a big struggle across the state. And so it'll be interesting to hear at this year's conference if any other districts have had, you know, I know that you guys are really working really diligently in trying to combat that. So it'll be interesting to hear what other, if that's still the same struggle across the board, which I have a feeling that it is.
You know what's a struggle when Desi's putting out commercials about attending school?
That is true.
I don't watch commercial TV, so I guess I, I guess I missed that memo.
We'll send it to you. They have multiple commercials out there about having parents send their students to school. And if you, if you go on the website, that's the first thing you see on their website.
Is that something that we could share on our district website perhaps?
If you think it would help.
I don't know if it will or it won't, but.
Probably get nasty letters.
Send them to Tracy.
Jeff?
So with, in the terms of absolute scores as a percentage of the state average, with the exception of third grade ELA, sorry, fourth grade ELA, all of the middle school and elementary school numbers are in the 60s, 70s, 80s, and even a 90 for third grade math, I believe it was. Yes, third grade math. And the SGP's, there's mostly above 50. What is scary, the most scary part of the MCAS results are, is the eighth grade. Because I'm looking at average SGP's, meaning for the last three years, I'm looking at average SGP's in the mid 30s. So putting aside the fact that their percentage of the state average is 40s, low 50s compared to the other schools, they're not, they have terrible growth as well.
Right.
What's happening?
I think it's a transition year for the students. I think it's always tough in the first year of a transition. I think that's part of it. It was a pretty large group that had some attendance issues last year as well. Our poorest attendance was in eighth grade. You know, you talk about, while the total percentage of the school was, you know, in the teens, their chronically absent rate was huge. We spend more time in court with a select group of eighth graders than we probably ever, ever spent for students in eighth, ninth, and 10th grade combined in past years.
We also have an average SGP for the last three years in 10th grade ELA that's below 40. That's not, that's not transition. That's 10th grade.
Right.
ELA.
Right.
How can that be?
Well, we cut all the core classes and just, we cut all of our core academic, our core English classes and brought them back last year. And we've actually transitioned to a new curriculum as well in there. So I think we're gonna continue to see some improvement over the next few years.
I sure hope so because eighth grade, I understand it's a transition year. And I'm spoiled rotten by the fact that I've got four fabulous, five fabulous eighth graders on my tennis team.
Keep them coming.
Yeah, I get it. But the average is terrible compared to these five eighth graders that I've got.
Right, right. And it's been a pretty strong group of eighth graders coming in. I think they were stronger seventh graders as well with Tracy. It's a, it's a really good group. It's a small group, as we all know, but not as challenging as last year's group, that's for sure.
And if you were gonna do one thing with, or maybe you're already doing it, for the current group of eighth graders to improve the appearance at least of academic proficiency, what would you do and do you have the resources to do it?
One thing, wow. I really think we're doing it with the, I think having the core English class for eighth graders has been huge. And, you know, it's the second year we've gotten it going. And I think that would be the one thing, and we're doing it.
Hope you're right.
I'm confident I'm right.
These are scary numbers.
I agree.
Okay.
April and Joyce?
For all three of you, do you think that, I mean, I'm guessing that a lot of the improvement is now, some of these kids are so many more years removed from COVID and from the shutdown and from the reintegration and getting back into like a more settled routine. So I know that Bethany, your numbers seem to be like more, do you think that because that, you got the kids, you and Scott got the kids that were like in regular school, rapidly disrupted, and then, you know, things changed around and then stay home, don't go to school sick, you know, the whole, the whole shift. So I think, do you think that you're now seeing the group that's coming in that hasn't had that disruption? And that's going to really kind of restructure and settle things off of the kids that are still kind of coming out of that basically like the formative years of COVID? And that was their first impressions of school? And now they're coming through on the other side of that? Do you think it's that cohort that's really, where those numbers are, you're seeing the least amount of growth versus the ones that did not necessarily, they haven't had that disruption of a global pandemic? That's really shifting things in a better.
Thank you, April. I do think that our students are definitely, there's more time on learning, right? In our, absolutely. But the one area about these results of the MCAS, which I like to see as a school principal, is I like to compare our school and our performance and our growth to other schools. And all of these students went through the same pandemic. They went through the same, right? And so when I'm looking at a school who has student, a student body who's gone through the same, they're the same age, that's really telling for our performance as, from our school. So yes, I think that our students are learning, you know, because there's much more time on learning. However, what the MCAS does do when they give us these reports is they compare us to other districts. And I use that information to compare our performance.
Do you guys ever reach out to those districts that are like on the DART level, similarly demographically, not just neighboring towns? Because we know that that's apples and oranges. But on the DART data, do you guys have like a, you know, like a, like PD with similar districts where you guys can say, hey, we saw that your growth was X, Y, and Z. What are you doing versus what we're doing as like a, you know, like a, you know, profession, not necessarily a professional development, but sort of like a forum to say, hey, we've done it this way, your numbers are this. What are you doing? And is that something you guys?
Yeah, I've contacted many schools' principals to share information with. Some principals have contacted me too. Right now, the middle school in Wareham is above our darts, right? Like our cohort. So I really need to see other districts, but different demographics. So it kind of makes that, you know. We've done that with, especially with inclusion, with special education. What are you doing? How are you doing this? Your scores are so great. And so we've learned from other schools, and I think they've learned from us. They've come to view us as well. So we do do that, yeah.
We have principals' group conversations. Usually it's via Zoom meetings. And I go on Niasq visits every year to chair those for Niasq. And those are always part of the conversation, especially to your point, if you see growth. But to go back to your original question, and I think there's a, there's a saying in the elementary schools, and Dr. Chandler may know it better than I do, but it usually takes three years when you have regression, to recover from that regression. And I really think, at least, you know, with one month's worth of school, I really feel like specifically for the high school, the students are coming back and they're in a better place this year than they were last year. And I think last year, they were in a better place than they were the year before. So we've seen, I think, you know, the effects of the pandemic. Certainly, they're still gonna be there from the high school because these kids were impacted in, you know, late elementary, early middle school. But I do see the students coming in in a better place. I see the attendance improving every year. And I see the behaviors improving as well. So I think.
I think each year, we get away from the pandemic. Every year, it's like, all right, this is a little bit better. This is.
Right, right. It's unfortunate, but, you know, every school's dealing with it. It's not just unique to Wareham.
Thank you.
I just have two quick questions, I promise. There was a time in the last few years when the high school was getting some support from Desi.
Right.
In regards to MCAS. Is that still happening or is that?
It's a two-year, even though we are not in need of support, it's a two-year program. And it's provided, it's provided some great PD, great resources. We've been able to really revise the curriculum, support the curriculum with new textbooks, new StudySync, which is a website that we're able to utilize. So there's been some new programs we've been able to bring in through that grant. So it's definitely been helpful. We do rounds three or four times a year with a consultant. Dr. DeAndrea comes over for those and our department heads, administration. So it's really been beneficial. And that's really focused on ELA.
Okay. And then there's a posting right now for an MCAS competency portfolio advisors. Is that a new, are those new positions?
It's just for a student that is in need of having a competency determination for graduation, which may not be needed. But that's a really small, just to make sure we can get the competency determination sent into Desi and get the works that we need for the appeal.
Okay.
It's a real small, it's, yeah, it's, I think, a few hours for each content area, math, English, and science. I wish it was something grander that I could say, there's this new program, which I, it's not grant funded either.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Jeff, sorry.
No.
No, go ahead.
So when I see a cohort, the third grade cohort for ELA went from 73% of the state average to 59% of the state average. I'm more convinced that ever, by the way, I love what you're doing with math because getting kids engaged, even if it's a video game, whatever works, right? But I'm more convinced than ever that we can't have kids getting to third grade who are not meeting expectations in second, third grade, first grade, et cetera. What percentage of the kids who are not meeting expectations when they leave kindergarten, first grade, and second grade are getting summer school focused on ELA?
I'd have to get the numbers to you. We have a lot of students that go to boost. We keep increasing it. We've increased two classes of boost. I retain a lot, I retain.
You do?
Oh.
So, all right.
Yeah.
So the combination of retention and summer school, is that close to 80, 90%?
I.
I'm not gonna hold you to the number.
Yeah, don't hold me the number. I would say that.
Only for the kids that aren't meeting expectations, obviously.
No, I wouldn't, I would say probably I get about 50% of those students in needs of improvement who are attending summers, maybe 60%.
Or retained.
Mm-hmm, correct.
That's too low.
And if, I mean, I would retain more. I just don't, I don't have a space in the class, in the school. I have to be very careful.
Well.
Of how, you know, the population.
Meaning retention, you have to be very careful?
Well, yeah, because I don't, I wouldn't have the population. And it doesn't always work.
Summer school, a question of space?
Uh, yes, this past year it was. I had a full, full house. I had the, my whole school was filled.
We're not gonna see ELA improve if we can't figure out how to prevent them from getting to third grade.
From, right. It's the regression over time. It's regression over time. It is, I agree.
It's also intervening in those low grades. We need interventionists. We need powers in every kindergarten class. We need things that we can't fund. That's what we need. And we need that in the elementary school. If we can't, if we can't make sure that that triangle is the right way before they get into third grade, then you are 100% correct. And it's not just that they can read. They need to read, they need to be able to comprehend, they need to be able to write, and they need to be able to do math. If we can't do that by the time they get to that third grade, then we're always doing that upside down triangle.
And the expectation from third, I mean, think about it. These children go from being five years old just to eight years old. And the amount of learning that they've gotta do in three years is so dramatic. I mean, unbelievable. They're coming in, many of them, without knowing their ABCs, knowing their sounds. And then by third grade, in three years, they're asked to write multi-paragraph essay, like essays. It's just, wow, you know?
Upside down triangle. That, what was that program, was it called?
RTI.
RTI.
Yeah.
That's exactly why RTI failed because we had the 80% instead of the 20%. And we didn't have enough interventionists to actually.
There was nothing to. It was nothing to do with them all.
Right. It was nothing, so.
I know.
So now we have them in small class sizes and we're trying to teach a heterogeneous group, but it, it, you know, it doesn't sound like it's overwhelming, but when you have 21 kids in your class-
Which we do.
And, and some can read fluently and some don't even know how to read at all.
So if, if the Chromebooks became the focus of the kids who are already successful and you used, the kids that are not successful got the intervention because the other kids can focus on the Chromebook.
They can't focus on the Chromebook though, no.
Some of my, some of the most, some of the students that have the highest achieving are the ones that can't focus at all.
That is true.
I'm getting, I'm getting beyond that. Thank you, Ms. J.
All right. Thank you for coming out tonight and presenting this. I know MCAS is always fun.
Oh, it's awesome.
But thank you.
Thank you.
Don't forget, almost, almost a trend and it's really good.
Almost a trend. You did say trend, but then you got-
So next up, Mr. Palladino, you're popular tonight.
Appreciate it.
The Innovation Career Pathway.
I've got Amy Dionne, who is the department head of the high school for science, business, applied, fine arts.
Everything.
Did I say it all, Amy? And Amy does a wonderful job. Amy also has taken over the pathways program, which is a grant funded program for the state. Part of our requirement is just to make sure we have reviewed what we are planning. There's no vote needed, there's no pressure on you. We are going to come back and incorporate this into the course of studies, but before we did that, we wanted to give you a cursory look at what we're looking at for this year and next year, more next year, obviously, in regards to our innovative career pathways. So I am going to turn it over to Amy Dionne.
I'm good, I think I'm good.
Can we first say thank you for waiting so long?
Yes.
I told, I warned her, I said, don't get here too early.
You picked the wrong night.
Food for thought. So hopefully, and good evening, hopefully you've all gotten a chance to review the presentation. Gives an overview of what the Innovation Career Pathway is as determined by DESI. It creates partnerships with mass higher workforce and aligns with our local, local community, you know, members. So actually, I should have touted this as good news at the beginning, that Wareham High School is an ICP designee, designee in environmental and life sciences, you know, as, as accepted by DESI. And what does that mean for WHS students? Structured academic pathways with course requirements that have them taking at least, at least two advanced courses in their junior and senior year or sophomore year, depending on their eighth grade dual enrollment options, and then taking two, well, three technical courses that offer the, taking two years of technical courses. So for example, zoology, as is posted there, marine bio, and introduction to botany. These are just examples of courses they can take in the technical field. Additional, and I can go on to the next slide. Additional advanced coursework would also possibly come from our dual enrollment relationship with Bridgewater State University, Mass Maritime Academy, et cetera. We have those all listed. We're actually piloting a capstone experience because as is part of the expectations of, of the grant of the ICP program is that there is some workforce alignment. We went with the capstone umbrella because we didn't want to pigeonhole students with internships because it isn't really equitable to say that all students can do an internship. So within the capstone experience, they can, they can choose to do an internship if that suits their needs, or they can do a research-based project, work, you know, interview, conduct experiments along with a teacher mentor. Really, the, it opens it up to whatever the student can think of. And then we have some career connections that we've proposed would happen, starting in ninth grade, 10th grade, 11th grade, and 12th grade. And then I don't know if this is, and then we have the plan of study that was linked here. Does that work? Because under the expectations for the ICP, students have to enroll in the program in ninth or 10th grade, 10th being the latest they can enroll in the program or the pathway. And this sort of just outlines the coursework that they would follow, if they would choose to follow that pathway. And then in 11th and 12th grade, there's a lot of options in the technical area, several options in the advanced coursework that they can take, and then of course, opportunities that align with job placement, things that we would reach out to mass hire for, to help us with, within the community. And if I go back. I think I've touched upon everything.
Next steps.
And then, I mean, if you have questions, that might come within the next step, so you might see some of your questions answered and what's next for the ICP program.
I just want one question. So it seemed to me to get, be very important to get the word out to parents and students of eighth and ninth graders especially, maybe 10th graders, to be able to get into this program and not realize after the fact, oh, I didn't know about this. How is that happening?
So we do have to post for a program coordinator. That's sort of part of, and that's why we've come to you first, because we do have to post for that coordinator and then recruit students to enroll in the program. However, all students technically in the ninth grade are, could be, are in the pathway because they start with bio. So they are all eligible at this point-
Okay.
-to be able to get into the program.
So ninth, the 10th, then would be the biggest?
And to answer your question, once the course of studies is approved, which I believe is set for early January, we would then have nights where we would promote the pathways, similar to how we promote the AP program, dual enrollment program. So on, probably separate nights because it may be two different groups, we would have those, but we obviously wouldn't be promoting too, too many things until it gets approved by school committee. We want to make sure we're in order.
Okay.
So you said it was grant funded, so this program coordinator position would be grant funded and not out of the LEA budget?
Correct.
Thank you.
Jeff?
Just to follow up on that, grant funded in perpetuity or is this a one-year grant fund?
It's five years.
Five years? Hmm, that's a reasonably long period of time. Okay, so I love the program and what I thought about is, I read through it earlier, we've got this problem within the state of Massachusetts where there are not enough slots for VoC Tech kids who want to go into the VoC Tech. Is this designed to, for some kids, to alleviate the problem in the sense that maybe or maybe not, they tried to get in, didn't get in, and there's a threat of them getting disengaged because the standard curriculum does not fascinate them, create any passions? Is this the sort of program that is designed to take a student who would otherwise not be particularly engaged and give them something to be engaged with?
Yes. I mean, it's absolutely designed to get students in the field within a wide range. So the nice thing and about the environmental and life sciences pathway is looking at the Southeast Blue Book for what careers are up and coming, it's, the blue economy is huge. So within that environmental and life science pathway, we're looking at lots of different ways students can get involved in marine sciences, for instance, and hands-on, hands-on learning, as I think what you're, you're saying, is the opportunity we want to give our kids.
Would you expect a kid who enrolls in this to need to go to college in order to be, in order to get employed and have the independence, a job sufficiently valuable so that they wouldn't have to go to college? I'm not saying they wouldn't be stimulated to go to college as a result of this, but for those students who for whatever reason decided they just wanted to get employed and go into the workforce, is this designed to help those kids?
Yes, yes. I mean, there's, definitely they'll get those opportunities through mass hire to coordinate with on-the-job folks.
And that's what the Workforce Investment Board is, is doing, is trying to get these young men and women employed so that they're productive citizens. And it, not all of the jobs that they have would require a college education. Certainly to your point, if they're stimulated enough, they may go in that direction. But this is not like a vocational program, as you know. This is just the pathway. But to Amy's point, I think what it really does is it gives those students more hands-on approaches to education than a traditional science curriculum.
One of the things that the Mass Conference is going to vote on, April is our delegate, is whether 16 as the time to leave school should be raised to 18. I think we, we weren't sure how we felt about that. We were quite ambivalent about that and one of our concerns was if you're just keeping kids for two years who are already disengaged, you're not really helping.
Right.
But if you have programs like this that in fact engages them, re-engages them, whatever, then, then it doesn't need to be 18 and you're not going to have the kids forced to stay in when they'd rather leave.
Right.
So if you're presenting, as you do, to kids, parents, as part of why go to Wareham High School?
Sure.
Is this the sort of thing you're going to include in your speech?
I think I'd be a fool not to.
Right.
Any, any, you know, pathway or, you know, vocational opportunities that students have or, or advanced placement type courses, like every kid's different. So some kids will be extremely attracted to this, some will be like, that's not for me. And I think the more opportunities you have to challenge the students, to your point, the more engaged they're going to be, the higher your graduation rate's going to be and, and you will attract other kids maybe not to leave. You know, you, you have these programs and that's, that's what students want. They want to be excited about their education and it's, it's always kind of been like the electives that excite the kids. And a lot of times when you look at those electives, that's what drives their post-high school plans.
Absolutely. So with the exception of the grant funded program coordinator, there are no financial implications to this?
I believe that there's a grant funded teacher as well, right, Amy?
Correct.
Where are these grants coming from?
DESI.
DESI.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you, good luck.
Thank you.
Can I just ask?
Yes, Joyce, go ahead.
Sorry, I'll be really quick, I promise. So first, I just want to say thank you because you know how excited I am about this. I'm really excited that Wareham, you should go on the website. It's really, I mean, the towns, the districts that are participating, it's really quite something.
I was surprised there wasn't aviation as a part of this.
Yeah.
Got to go talk to your friends in New Bedford and the Workforce Investment Board.
The Blue Book.
Okay.
So I'm curious, there are different avenues you can go down, right? So there's business, there's health sciences. So what made you decide, I'm not, I'm not questioning your decision, I'm just curious what made you decide to go this route first? And I say first because you can have several.
Correct. And we hope to have several before, you know, in the next few years.
It had to do with conversations with staff, looking at what we could, what we could do with the money that we were getting and what we could do with what we already had. So it had to do with what we already offer.
Mm-hmm.
And, you know, adding the one teacher is going to open up our other science teachers to offer more electives. Looking at the fact that we already had Viking block in place was a big help because we could use that for the capstone monitoring as we are in the piloting stages of, of the second year of that program. Other areas, it was just, it was really staffing. So how much more staff would we need to pull in to be able to make a pathway?
It sounds like it just fit with what you already had.
And it, it was a lot of in-kind and, and then working with the Workforce Investment Board, we had to make sure it was aligned to what they need support in, in, in the job market. And this was an area-
Right.
-that was, I believe, one of the highest, right, Amy?
Yes.
No, it's, it's great. Do you have to apply for the grant every year or once you're, once you're in, are you in for five years?
Well, that's, it's all new to me. There's definitely stuff sent by DESI deadlines and such that have to be applied to, to, to follow through on that. We are in the first, the round, you know, first round basically of the, this part of the, the grant of being a designee. So next year, I'm, I'm sure they're going to probably have something that we have to fill out and turn in by a deadline.
But I think once you're making progress on this pathway, nothing's guaranteed, obviously, but I think they look favorably upon your application when they know you have X, Y, and Z in place. It's based on, speaking to some of the other schools that have been in the pipeline for this, there's, as Amy mentioned, there's five years of support if needed. So that's substantial for us.
No, I think it's great. I can't wait to see where it goes.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Scott, anytime you want to schedule the Park Scholarship Group to meet, I'll be happy to, we got good news from John Foster.
Do you want to just send me an email sometime or we'll set that up?
Sure.
Awesome, thank you.
Dr. DeAndrea, we have the superintendent's report.
I do have a gift that I would like to ask you to accept. It's from a parent who I'm not going to identify because I don't know whether or not he wants to be identified, so I'm going to err on the side of caution and not identify him. He's a parent of a kindergartner and a first grader at Wareham Elementary School who would like to donate a 3D printer to our STEAM classroom, a Creality Ender 3V2 3D printer.
Idea what that means.
So I ask that you accept that very kind gift.
So moved.
Second.
Question. Do we have any idea what the value of that?
Idea, I actually Googled it today. It's about between $150 and $200.
That's all?
Yeah.
Wow. Okay.
Very generous gift.
So we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, 400. And thank you for that gift to our anonymous donor.
And I have the, in, in the superintendent's newsletter, the payroll and bill warrants I ask that you approve.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, 400. I always love how we approve $2 million like that and we just send 10 seconds and we discuss everything else ad infinitum, but I appreciate it.
Thanks, Kristen, we've seen it before.
Well, that's true. That's true.
Well, I think we've said that before. We want everyone to know that we have seen-
Thank you.
...these already.
Yes, and we have to sign off on it and-
All the detail.
Correct. And we can ask questions behind the scenes at any time.
And that's all I have. Thank you.
Wow, that was quick. All right. School committee report. April?
Our first meeting of the Policy Review Subcommittee will be next Wednesday at 5:00 and I think this is the first year I haven't had to beg for members, so I'm very excited that we were able to fill the roster for that quickly. So then after that meeting, at our next school committee meeting, I will be able to present what, how that goes.
Thank you. Under other business, I just, I'm sorry, Jeff, my peripheral's not working today.
Okay. Just a quick note. We did get, we made progress on the Park Scholarship Committee, the investing part of it. Not only did John Foster approve the investment process that I recommended, but he actually found a professional money manager through Rock, what's the bank, Rockdale?
Rockland Trust.
Rockland Trust, okay, is going to be the official money manager and they're going to charge us a half a percent, which is pretty, pretty generous, actually. It could be, it could be a lot more. And much to my surprise, they're actually going to guarantee that we have enough money to provide the $3,000 scholarships for four years. I don't know how they're going to guarantee it, but, and the good news is the account is up to $735,000, which is the result of not having used any of it because even though they were awarded last spring, they don't get any of the money until after the first semester. So it's, it looks like, the only person that's slightly disappointed is Scott wants it to be invested so that we can grow that scholarship amount from 3,000 to whatever number as the cost of going to school rises. But it's going to be invested, this is probably more than you want to know, it's going to be invested the way OPEB money is invested, Kristen, I'm sure knows what that is, but it stands for Other Post-Employment Benefits, which means the state has approved that to be invested. the state has approved that to be invested, 75% equities and 25% what they call fixed income. So bottom line is, since they're going to do that, it should be very easy to make, to make 5% return and continue those scholarships, and hopefully have it grow so we can grow the scholarship as well. Now that I've given you far more than you need, and we're going to be meeting with the students, so that they get an education out of this process as well.
Thank you for your work on that. Thanks. Just in order to dot our i's and cross our t's, I'd like to issue a disclosure that the school committee is not sponsoring, endorsing, or promoting any non-curricular student-related groups going forward. We have the right to monitor any club meetings going forward, and we have the right to close limited open forum at any time, should we choose to, going forward. So I just want to get that on, on the record. With that-
This is going to go to the Jesus Club to see how it's doing.
With that, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? 400. And meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody.